Good evening, everybody. Before I begin the regular city council meeting closed session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. And at this time, I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting closed session. The time is 5:36. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Here.
And Mayor Frometta?
Present. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Saying none, okay. I will close public comment. And is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll move.
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Number one, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, the conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Angela Leon Avila versus the City of Downey, Los Angeles Superior Court case number 22STCV04706. Number two, Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Evan Mahoney versus the City of Downey, Los Angeles Superior Court case number 22STCV07530. Number three, Government Code Section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiators, property locations 11269 Garfield Avenue, APN 6234-008-901, and 11282 Garfield Avenue, APN 6245-016-926, and APN 6245-016-934. The agency negotiator is City Manager Roger Bradley. The negotiating party is the County of Los Angeles. And under negotiation are price and terms of payment for potential purchase or lease of property. Number four is Government Code Section 54956.95, a liability claim, workers' compensation claim, claimant Bodie Sherman, claim number 19-141694, 20150463, and 16-125184. Workers' Compensation Appeals Board number ADJ12089951, and ADJ13540137. The agency claimed against is the City of Downey. And last on our closed session agenda item is Government Code Section 54956.95, liability claim, so workers' compensation claim. The claimant is Maria Villagas, claim number 22-162761, Workers' Compensation Appeals Board number ADJ16028975. And the agency claimed against is the City of Downey. We will now recess to closed session. The time is 5:39. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to your City of Downey meeting. At this time, Mr. City Attorney, would you please report the closed session action?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council and members of the public. The city council met in closed session this evening and addressed each of the items on the agenda as read by the mayor at the opening of the closed session. However, there was no reportable action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Before we begin the regular city council meeting open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If you did not obtain a number in wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and city staff will issue you a number card. Lining up during public comment is not permitted and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Additionally, it appears we are having some trouble with our YouTube channel. If you can please, if you would like to join our meeting remotely and if you are having trouble accessing YouTube, please join the Zoom link that is included in the agenda. At this time, I will now like to call to order the regular city council meeting open session. The time is 6:39. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Present.
And Mayor Frometta?
Present. At this time, I would like to invite Reverend David Berry from First Presbyterian Church of Downey to lead us in the invocation. Would you please rise?
I invite all those who would like to do so to pray with me. Oh Lord, our governor, your glory shines throughout the universe. We commend to your merciful care, our world, our nation, our state, and especially this, our City of Downey, that we may live securely in peace and be guided by your providence. Give all those in positions of authority and especially the members of this council the wisdom and strength to discern your will and to do it. Help them remember that they are called to serve the people as lovers of truth and justice through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. I would like to please welcome and call on Girl Scout troops 275, 285, and 2543. Welcome, welcome. They will lead us and they will conduct the flag salute tonight.
Face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Freddie Beegan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. You may now be seated.
Thank you. Round of applause for these Girl Scout troops. This will be your first warning for booing, for shouting.
That wasn't booing, yeah? City Attorney, what's that warning for?
I would just remind members of the public and everyone in the audience that any behavior that leads to a disruption or an interruption of the council's orderly business would be warned and subject to removal. That was a courtesy warning that the mayor extended, but the expectation is that all members of the public adhere to the rules of decorum as put forth by the city. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome our new city attorney. Mr. Funk, we appreciate you. At this time, I will open it up to city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference and meeting reports. Starting to my far left, Councilmember Timothy Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report that I attended two ribbon cutting events by the Downey Chamber of Commerce, NG and New Spine Chiropractic. I also attended the Downey Chamber of Commerce Ambassador's Luncheon. I participated in the League of California Cities Annual Conference in Sacramento and I attended the Downey Chamber of Commerce Networking Meeting. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to attend a couple of regional meetings. One is the County Sanitation District Meeting. That's an important one because we share a lot of sewage lines with other cities and they're administered supervised by the county. If you remember, we had a sewage leak earlier this year. I think it was in April in District Two. So truly important that we make sure the county sanitation program is providing top services to Downey. I also had an opportunity to attend the 21st, 24th, excuse me, Citizens Academy class kickoff. It's a great program put on by our police department. If you're ever interested, it happens twice a year, the Downey Citizens Academy. I also attended the New Spine Chiropractic Red Ribbon along with my colleague, Mr. Horn. I had an opportunity to attend a swearing in for the Metro Board for one of our neighboring council members, Juan Luis Guevara from the City of Lingwood. Thank you for that invitation. Hispanic Heritage Month is here. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month and happy independence to several members from several countries that live in this city, but we're now all happily Americans. I also attended the Latina Empowerment Day at the Southern California Resource Center. The Hope Sisters, they're a very active group of women who get involved politically and socially. So thank you for coming to Downey. Congratulations to the Epic Lounge. They were selected by Bar Rescue. I don't know if some of you are familiar with that show, but it was good to see one of our local businesses get picked up by that show. They refurbished his whole place and it looks great. So congratulations to Epic Lounge and David Devis. I want to welcome our city attorney. This is his first official meeting. John Funk, for many of you who may not know, is actually a graduate of Downey High School. We are a Viking home, yes?
Yeah.
Welcome home, John. I can't help but think about how it must feel to now be the city attorney of the city that saw you grow up. I know for us, it was special when we heard that one of the leading candidates, that was you, had a history of Downey. That really means a lot to us. Thank you for accepting our offer and welcome to Downey. Welcome home. I also attended the League of Cities Annual Conference and Expo in Sacramento, California. Had an opportunity to attend several workshops, one of them dealing with the limits of public comment. It is unfortunate that we're seeing so much disruption going on in our council meetings, including here in the city. So learning how to deal with that because I do not believe that it was the intent of our forefathers to have individuals who routinely come here and disrupt city business. So we're working on that. Also had an opportunity to attend sessions regarding building relationships between police departments and the community and dealing with the homeless epidemic that the country is facing. You paid for us to go to these conferences. I thank you for the opportunity to be able to attend and network with other city leaders and see what they're doing in their communities to provide more protection and services in our community. I also attended the Downey Symphony Phantom Masquerade. The Downey Symphony, the attendance is really low. It's one of the feathers in our hat. The next Downey Symphony session would be Saturday, October 14th. I encourage you to attend in our beautiful theater, Theater of the Downey Symphony. In terms of agenda items, Downey Avenue, which carries the namesake of our city, needs to be repaved badly from Imperial all the way up to Firestone. That's sort of like the center, if you will. I know that Firestone and Downey Avenue are the epicenter of our city. And if you go south of that, that street is just not reflective or at least it's not how I want people to remember our city. So I'm curious to see, when is that going to be repaved? In the last 30 years, 33 that I've lived here, Downey Avenue has gone neglected. It is time we start paying attention to Downey Avenue. So please, somebody tell me what's going on with that avenue and how soon can we get it fixed?
I believe it's in design right now.
Excellent. I would like to see if perhaps through Park and Rec, we could reach out to, it's a senior citizen club. It's called Club de Oro, Club de Oro. Would like to see if we could do something for our seniors coming up for Thanksgiving. Maybe we're already working on something, but I'd also like to see if we could do something with Club de Oro and Ferias Legales, maybe some free legal assistance for our senior citizens in Downey and surrounding communities. I would also like an update on what our rental assistance fund, that we still have funds there. I'm curious to see if we can use those to prevent families from going into homelessness. So I would like an update on the rental assistance. And last but not least, I'm sure many of you heard about the tragic shooting that happened in Downey Avenue. I would like to address that this is of concern. It turns out this individual was from a surrounding city. And this is what happens when you open up your city and invite others to come in and spend the dollars here, right? For sake of economic development, we open up our city. For sake of economic development, we open up our cities. But I also remember when Downey was known as the city that you did not want to get arrested in. We had a reputation for being strict, having a very strict police department, professional, fair, but strict. And we also had tough code enforcement, but those days are gone. People are coming into our city. We've opened it up for the sake of economic development. And now we have this bail policy which concerns us. I believe that some people need to be locked up. If you come into our city and you could benefit from being locked up, I want to know that our officers can hold people for the forty-eight hours that I believe are allowed under the law, regardless of whether the DA is going to file or not, regardless of what may happen. We have jail cells in that police station and I want to know they're being used. I realize it's a cost. We probably understand for my discussions with the chief, have to hire a third-party company. If the cost to deter people from coming into our city is something we have to consider, then that's something we should invest in. I want our police officers to be able to hold people for forty-eight hours. Some people will benefit. They will be deterred from hearing the slamming of a jail cell in their face and have to probably sleep on the floor with a blanket for forty-eight hours, being fed cobaloney sandwiches and having to use the restroom in front of their jail cells, so that people will think twice before coming to our city and committing crimes. I want to be able to lock people up if our officers determine that it's someone who should be locked up. And I believe they've given us criteria, but under the book and release part of that, I want our officers to be able to avail themselves of the full forty-eight hours. So I would like our city attorney, perhaps in conjunction with our police chief, to let us know if we can proceed as such, so we could consider making that a policy in Downey. Again, regardless of what is going on in the county, I want our officers, if they deem it fit, if it's a young man or a young lady who's acting a fool and maybe locking him up and they need to be away from mommy and daddy for forty-eight hours and allows us to do that, then that's what we should do. So I want to know if we can do that, starting as soon as we can, because this bail policy goes into effect next week. So I don't know if it's too soon, but I would like staff to let me know, particularly our city attorney and our police chief, can we use these jail cells and how much is it going to cost us so this council could consider making that investment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Trujillo. Councilmember Sosa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good to see a pretty much a full house tonight. I do want to have a couple of asks, then I'll get into my activities for staff. I do want an update on the, any possible locations for the community garden that I proposed and asked for. We can get an update on that. Some residents are asking about that. And also, I'd like to put on the next agenda for us to review and look at potential fee waivers and/or discounts for the crosstown kickoff festival that's coming up on October seventh. And this is a new event, so. So going back to my activities for the last couple of weeks, I attended the Gangs Out of Downey Monthly Meeting. They do have their annual tournament, which is their biggest fundraiser coming up on Monday, October second. I too attended the Symphonic Society Masquerade. It was a lot of fun and happy to partake in that and glad to see them taking part in functions like that to raise funds. It's a good way to raise funds for the organization. And I was at the League of California Cities Conference as well and attended several sessions. Ones in particular on housing and development were very educational and we got to mix it up, as Mayor Protem Trujillo said, with other local elected officials. And I do want to make a comment on the unfortunate incident that took place at the Mambo Grill a few days ago. My wife and I both grew up here in the city of Downey. We have two sons that we raised here. And they've gone through the Downey Unified School System. And it's heartbreaking to see something like that happen. And honestly, I think, you know, this individual that got arrested has been arrested several times. My understanding is no convictions. You know, simply what we need is law and order. We need law and order. We need these guys to be locked up. They shouldn't be out in the streets. And with respect to law enforcement, like a lot of people asking, you know, we need more cops. You know, the city council, the city is trying to hire more police officers. We're a few under budget right now. I have hundred percent faith in Downey PD and law enforcement. And what we need is law and order. These guys that come through that shouldn't be on the streets should be locked up. And law enforcement has taken a beating over the last several years. Crimes have gone up because of lax policies. So people need to remember that when they go to the voting booth next year. There's a big election year coming up next year. And enough's enough. We simply need law and order and we need support for our law enforcement officers. That concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sosa, and thank you, colleagues. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's good to see a full house. And I want to take a moment to address some concerns that have been expressed by our community to all of us. First, I want to address the opening of Ojos Locos. The city has designated different zones throughout our city where different business types are allowed to operate on each zone by right, which means that the business can operate without any special approvals from the city. This also means that the city cannot limit or refuse a specific business from operating in a particular zone. This was the case with Ojos Locos, where the area is zoned for restaurant use. And as such, any restaurant, including Ojos Locos, has the right to buy or lease on the private market enterprise and establish themselves there without any special approvals because the property is located in the downtown Downey-specific plan zone. While the city is unable to prevent Ojos Locos from operating at its Downey location, the city has been in constant communication with the owners of Ojos Locos to address safety and other concerns, including establishing a security plan that has been vetted by the city as required by its conditional use permit for live music. Additionally, the city is also in communication with the restaurant in regards to the city's uniform ordinance. If you recall, we discussed that at great length last year. The city of Downey is committed to supporting a diverse economy and we want our businesses to thrive. However, we also strive to strike a balance between meeting the needs of our businesses and those of our residents and families. We will continue to monitor Ojos Locos and work closely with the owners. Now, in regards to the incident at Mambo Grill Saturday morning, there have been rumors and allegations that this was in connection to the operation of Ojos Locos. That is false. This unfortunate and tragic incident was an isolated event and not related to Ojos Locos. As has been mentioned by my colleague Hector, I too grew up in this community. I've been here for over thirty-five years and I've raised my family here. My four children have attended Downey Unified Schools. Now, early morning of, the early morning of Saturday, Downey police officers responded to an emergency situation at Mambo Grill. The officers were informed that an unknown suspect and his female companion had earlier been escorted out of the restaurant due to unruly behavior. The suspect returned a few minutes later, driving southbound on Downey Avenue in a dark-colored SUV. The suspect then discharged a firearm in the direction of the Mambo Grill before speeding away southbound. Tragically, as you have heard and read, there were four victims who were transported immediately to area hospitals with injuries. I want to extend my sincere gratitude and appreciation to our police department and our fire department for your response and for saving those lives. Thank you. Please, police, fire, chief. Extend our heartfelt gratitude to the officers that responded to this incident. Now, the three victims were treated and released later that morning. The fourth victim is still hospitalized and is still in critical condition. It is expected and hoped that all will make a full recovery and we pray that this happens quickly. I'm proud to say that after working around the clock yesterday through the weekend and yesterday, the outstanding work of our police department yielded the results we wanted. And that was the arrest for the individual responsible for that incident. Thank you once again. Now, I want to make clear for everyone that the safety of our residents is our top priority. The restaurants and the bars that have entertainment downtown are required to have a security plan in place that is approved by the Planning Commission and by the city council. Now, I also addressed a few issues over the weekend. And I wanted the community to know that we are, we are looking at increasing our security measures. Mambo Grill has an approved security plan and they are required to adhere to it at all times. Based on the preliminary review and assessment of the situation, Mambo Grill had four security personnel on site and that was the required amount that they were supposed to have. Now, they also cut the alcohol consumption to this unruly individual who was then escorted out of that establishment. That individual came back, as I've expressed to you, based on the information that was gathered and discharged that firearm. Now, I want to let you know that Downey Police Department was fully staffed that weekend. Now, we also need to realize, as has been said before, we are facing critical times where violence is happening all over our communities. And this is not a reflection of our community, our law enforcement, or our residents. But at the same time, as a city, and I did speak to this, that we would be having conversations about operating hours. You know, at some point, when I grew up in this community, minors, and please, young people, don't get offended, but when I grew up here, going to school at Warren High School, there were curfews for underage youth. I'm not talking about curfews for adults. You know, I say that and all of a sudden, we get PTSD because of the COVID curfews, right? That's not what I'm talking about. But what I talk about and what Councilmember Sosa discussed is, again, law and order. We got to look at all this globally. Not only as local governments, yes, we need to review what are our security measures and plans in place? Are establishments following those? Do they have the extra security that they need to respond to a potential incident within their establishment that is selling alcohol? We have a police department that is responsible for monitoring fourteen and a half square miles and responding to the needs of a hundred and fourteen thousand people on any given day. And so it doesn't, and yes, people say, we need more boots on the ground. We need more boots on the ground. Well, yes, we would all like more boots on the ground, but let me tell you. And I will step back for a minute. There was an occupancy tax measure that was put in the ballot last year. And it was a very small percentage that we discussed. Unfortunately, that measure did not pass. That measure would have yielded close to a million dollars in revenue for the city. And you know where that million dollars was going to be used for? That million dollars was going to be used for law enforcement. If we want to hire an additional, I know right now we are low and we are in the process of hiring additional officers. If we want to hire an additional, once we hit our target, if we want to hire an additional ten or fifteen, then guess what, Downey? We need at least another two million dollars. Now, do we want to do that as a council? Absolutely. Where is that going to come from? How are we going to pay for that? And so these are the decisions that, yes, you ask us to make. But at the same time, when we look at our overall budget, three-quarters of the budget for this city is already geared to law enforcement, police and fire. And so when people ignorantly say, we just need boots on the ground, we need to be able to pay for that. And so as we look at how we move forward in our future planning and budget and measures, think about a half a cent, a half a cent tax increase. Half a cent. That's what we did with Measure S several years ago. And we got what we promised. The parks, the library, the road improvements, the equipment for our officers. Half a cent, Downey, can yield what we need to have the additional officers. Because at this point in time, and it's been said that as long as we have the current policies in place from our county and state, our police officers can be out there arresting. And we are seeing this on a daily basis, not just in Downey, but in every city across the state. It's catch and release. And the policies coming out of Los Angeles County DA's office are emboldening criminals. And as council members, we are sitting here wanting to have more law and order for our cities. But because we fall under the jurisdiction of Los Angeles County and the district attorney's office within LA County, that's what we need to adhere and abide by. And so it suffice to say, once again, we will be looking at additional safety measures in the downtown, including potential security cameras, which I had already mentioned, and communicating with each of the businesses to discuss additional safety precautions that can be implemented to keep the community safe. In fact, I've been in communication with the president of the DDIA, the Downtown Business Association, and we are all in this together. It is important for each and every one of us to be attentive and mindful of the legislations right now happening, the court rulings and the policies that are implemented at the state and at the county level. Because as I've mentioned, it's becoming more and more difficult to hold individuals accountable for their actions and to keep these individuals behind bars who may pose a threat to our public safety. We will continue to proactively engage with each other, with our community members, with our business owners, certainly with our law enforcement, with our police chief, in other policies and other remedies, how to keep our community safe. Thank you. Thank you tonight. It is frustrating for us to see what is happening all around us and we want nothing more than to keep our families safe. I see the young people tonight and I know in our agenda is welcoming you to the Youth Commission. Thank you for listening and thank you for joining us. Thank you once again to our police and fire for all of your efforts. I know it's frustrating for our law enforcement officers that are required to do so much. and yet it's catch and release. So I need you, I need you to do your homework, and I need you to vote for the individuals that will prioritize public safety. But most importantly, when the city is asking for a half a cent tax increase to increase police enforcement and police presence, we need that. I don't have any further questions, any further comments, except welcome. And join us Friday night for Havana Nights. We will have from six to nine thirty PM in downtown Downey. We also, on Saturday, at the Downey Public Library, we will, we welcome Beyond the Book. And do you want to have coffee with one of our police officers? I think you do. And that is happening October the fifth, Thursday, six to eight PM. That will conclude my comments tonight. I appreciate all of you, and I will turn it over to our city manager for his comments.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Just a couple of items to follow up on. Make sure we have seconds on the future gen item requests. First, the Downey Avenue paving, absolutely, we'll get that information. It is in our capital improvement program. We are currently in design for that project and is moving forward. Club de Oro, and as I understand, trying to integrate them into our Thanksgiving programs for assistance. Definitely, if I get a second on that, we're definitely willing to work on that.
Second.
Rental assistance funds, that's information, happy to provide what our balances are on that, no problem. Can our, and then there was a quest to look at and provide a report about whether our officers can hold people for forty-eight hours. Is there a second on that item?
Second.
Uh, update on location security, secure, locations for this, the community garden? If there's a second, we'll definitely bring, well, that's already in our current work plan. We'll bring that back. That's not a problem. Potential. Oh, the fee waiver for the cross down kickoff. I can read my own handwriting, unfortunately. The fee waivers for the cross down kickoff, and if there's a second for that, we'll bring that back.
Second.
And that's, that concludes staff's comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and at this time, we have one presentation, and then we'll get to our public comment in our agenda. I have a few presentations, or one presentation and a few welcoming for our youth commissioners. Every year, we have an opportunity as council members to appoint new youth commissioners. And these individuals, the, this is open to all of our high schools. And the youth are able to apply to serve in this capacity. It's a, it's a one-year term. Sometimes they can reapply and be selected again. And they meet on a monthly basis to discuss items that are pertinent to the city, and they have a perspective as, as young people. And once a year, before the program culminates, in, in April, they have the Youth Government Day. And they simulate a day where they play ourselves, and they manage various projects, and they conduct a city business, a city meeting. But it's so important to get youth commissioners involved because how a city runs, how is it that we make policy? And how is it that we can effectively affect change? And I just want to say thank you to the young men and young women that are sitting in the audience here. Many of your predecessors have, of course, moved on to college and have moved on to do great things, some to grad school, they've moved out of state, and then they've come back to their community to serve in various capacities. And at this point, at this time, I would like to call upon Recreation Manager Monica Ortiz to assist in the presentation. And Jason Chacon, Director of Parks and Rec. We, can I have Viviana Renteria, please? We have Brianna Rosas. Now, these young men and women submitted the application on time. They were reviewed. They are selected by each council member to represent the district. There are typically two vacancies per district, and each one of us council members get to review the various applications. Again, when we select them, they need to be, we select based on the district that they choose to represent. So, in recognition of your participation and as an expression of appreciation by the city council on behalf of the citizens of Downey, thank you for participating. Jennifer Cervantes. Bra, Braulio Leiva. Alisa Portillo. Camila Torres. And Alan Navarro. Actually, we have one more. Priscilla Pelayo. If I can have my council colleagues join me, can you please give them a round of applause? And for, for those of, for those of you parents joining us this evening, thank you for also being committed to having your children serve our city in this capacity. We are definitely very proud to have them join us, and we, we hope that this experience over the next year will be a fulfilling one in their growth and in their development and understanding of civics and how cities work. I did want to welcome, I did want to welcome all of you, but especially some individuals in the audience that I did not have an opportunity to welcome, especially as I was addressing the incident that occurred over the weekend. Welcome, Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert. Appreciate you being here. Carrie Uva, Planning Commissioner. Thank you for joining us. Also, former president of the Downey Chamber of Commerce, Carmen Padilla. Thank you for joining us. And I think I saw Dorothy Pemberton, also Public Works Commissioner. Thank you all. Now, moving on, at this time, we are moving on to public comment. I will now take public comment on agenda consent and non-agenda items. If you haven't received a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. And before we begin the public comment period, again, I just want to remind members of the audience that our city's meeting rules contained in our Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of our meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the room. And speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code, Section 403. As I've said before, I will say it again, the city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within our city's jurisdiction and invites our public to do so during our city council meeting, public comment time. However, please remember, this right must be balanced with the need of this city council to conduct public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's, tonight's meeting, from the members of the Council on the Dais to the staff and the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes whistling, yelling, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupt this meeting. Any conduct that interferes with our meeting, any person who are addressing the city council, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. I remind the speakers that your comments need to be addressed to me and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive written correspondence to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. We received correspondence from Jose Guardado, Sonia Guardado, a Corrigan Avenue resident, a second Corrigan Avenue resident, Germet Batal, a third Corrigan Avenue resident, and three residents who did not provide their name in opposition to item number seven on the consent calendar. We also received written correspondence from Jen Dunlap and Rachel Malkenhurst Newkirk in opposition to the Ojos Locos Sports Cantina. And lastly, we received correspondence from Pablo Morales, a resident who expressed concerns regarding parking congestion and speeding on Dinwoodie Street. He requested the implementation of a parking permit system. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Elisa. Can I have a motion to receive and file the written public comment?
So moved.
Second. So ordered by the mayor.
Mayor, can we take a vote for this one?
Yeah, yes, please, please vote. We had a motion and a second.
The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, now, we will move to the in-person public comment.
We have a total of twenty-one speakers.
Okay. Um, we will, we will have two minutes per speaker. Thank you. We have twenty-one speakers tonight. Beginning with speaker number one, you may come up. Thank you for coming. And your clock will begin when you approach the podium.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Prometa. My name is Maria Comyan. And my family and I have lived in the city of Downey for almost thirty years. And in lieu of the shooting that happened this past weekend in our city, I would like to share the following scripture. Seek peace and well-being for the city where I have sent you into exile and pray to the Lord on its behalf, for in its peace and well-being you will have peace. Jeremiah twenty-nine seven, the Amplified Version. Let it be so for the city of Downey. Thank you for your time. God bless you all.
Thank you for that. Speaker number two may come up.
I know the Los Angeles County District Attorney's soft-on-crime policies are encouraging criminal behavior, especially in youth and young adults. An increase in theft and mob-style smash and grabs is happening. We need a district attorney who will reverse the policies encouraging this amount of crime. Let's get Solomon's perspective on this. It is good to get the perspective of a wise man. Because the sentence against an evil work is not executed speedily, therefore, the heart of the sons of men is fully set in them to do evil. Solomon said these words about two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight years ago. You will find them recorded in Solomon's autobiographical memoirs, which we know as the Book of Ecclesiastes, Chapter Eight, Verse Eleven. I have quoted from the New King James Version of the Holy Bible, which is my favorite translation in the English language. On the internet, visit thechristianworldview.org.
Thank you for that. Good evening.
All right. Boy. You've had plenty of opportunity to govern here. You've had plenty of opportunity to add more police officers to our police force. You failed to do it at every turn. Measure S expires in about eighteen more years. And all you, Mayor, can come up with is more taxation? You're lamenting about the hotel tax, and you're lamenting about, we're all done with Measure S? No, we have a half percent sales tax that's going to last at least another sixteen, seventeen years. That brings in ten million dollars a year. That's what we voted for. So don't act like the well is dry there. You've had plenty of opportunity to add police officers, and you failed. And then we have to sit here and endure the gaslighting and diversions that you and fictional District Number Five representative threw at us all night long here. I think you guys should do the honorable thing. I think you should resign. And we get out. Get out. You've had your chance. You are correct. You and the DDIA are all in it together. Your friend was given the security contract. How did that work out? Not very well. But we have plenty of money. You want to cut money? How about that Downey Theater over there? You authorized over eight hundred thousand a year for the You authorized over eight hundred thousand a year for the Downey Theater. We don't even know if they're making money or breaking even over there. We need audits, Mr. Attorney. But you have plenty of money. You have two and a half thousand dollars for Rancho Los Amigos. You have thirty-five thousand dollars for Downey Arts Coalition. You have twenty-five thousand dollars for State Gallery. I could go on and on. You need to resign.
Thank you for that. Speaker number five may come up. Number four.
Lee Squire, Vietnam Air Veteran. I am the son and nephew of World War II. I'm the nephew of Korea. I grew up during the civil rights movement. I doubt any of you did. I don't need any lectures about law and order. I can tell you what it was like growing up during the 1960s in a specific race that was a subject matter of racial discrimination in this city, which I'm not going to lecture you about. Number two, nine eleven. On nine eleven, there was a table honoring our fire department. I also just presented them with a thin red line flag. Last year, I informed you where was my police table honoring, so they could sit there and honor their sixty-seven brothers and sisters on nine eleven. I sent an email to you city council members, if you want, I'll do a public records request, asking you again, prior to this nine eleven, are you going to have a table honoring my police department? If you're going to honor them, then you honor them. We had two memorials. Did you post a thin red line flag on our firefighter memorial and the thin blue line flag on our police memorial? I gave them a thin blue line flag. I did not see that those colors posted on either of those memorials. Those are our, that is our nine eleven remembrance. Also, for the next twenty years, my family, the military family, shed their blood fighting terrorism in this, in this, against this nation. Also, I gave Mr. Bradley the pictures of Downey High School graduates of World War II, Korean, Vietnam, and I'm asking to verify and put their names where they belong on that Downey Veterans Memorial. I'd like to know what that status is. Also, I will come back with an investigation into utility user tax you adopted in 1990. You swore to add about twenty-seven police officers, and you never did, based upon my audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Speaker number five may come up.
You dumbass. I'm number five. I want to speak on all items and non-agenda public comment. So, the fat mayor says Measure N for local return funds is like Measure S, a big suck. Look at the four items on golfing. Fucking bitch. Eleven and twelve on this fucking shit called an agenda. It's not implemented.
At this time?
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, may I just offer you a friendly reminder? Oh, please, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to offer you a brief reminder. Yes, I'd like you to...
You need to address this to the puppet, sir. You're not talking to me.
Yes, so I'm going to ask the Madam Clerk to suspend the time that you have remaining just so I can offer a brief reminder. As you know, under the Brown Act, public comments can be made on agenda items and even, and even more broadly, on any item within the jurisdiction of the city council. I do wish to remind you, Mr. Speaker, please allow me to proceed until you allow your time afterwards. I just want to get to the point very quickly. Personal attacks, though, without anything else, fall outside of the category of permissive speech of the Brown Act. Mr. Speaker? I'm happy to take up your concerns after the meeting. I'll ask the clerk to resume your time, but I did want you to be mindful that personal attacks on council members are not relevant to anything before the council tonight or otherwise. Thank you.
So, we're going, we're going to go ahead and take a recess at this time. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed. Mr. Herman, you have received the one warning.
What's the warning?
You cannot interfere. You are being disruptive as well. Go ahead. Yeah, you're wasting your time. Go ahead and, and go with the clock.
... Fucking destruction of subdivision public improvements located at 10221, 100303 Downey Avenue. Fucking, for $200,000, $80,000 to pay for the shit. That was fucking, fucking parking, stupid. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants to live on the fucking street in their cars. They want... So now, to my political arena speech.
But can you please stop the clock? This, this, you're... I, I need, City Manager, I need this individual removed.
Please.
Your language is offensive to this council. And it's disruptive.
Mr. Speaker, again, personal attacks that are connected to any agenda item or otherwise are not allowed into the parameters of the Brown Act. Thank you.
Now, I'm sorry. You can talk to me and not my puppet. So, here's the thing. Well, I'm going to turn my documents on stepping outside. This is what I've been reading, and here's the agenda. See that? See that? Brandon, Brandon Curtis is alive. Back to Sarah Ann, and fuck the police. But what's the problem? But what's the problem? Why you asking? But I want to know the reason why. I'm going to get my stuff, but don't tell me when. I'll get, get it when I get to it. You understand that? I have the first amendment right to be protected, not threatened. So I'll get it when I'm ready. So slow down. So are you...
Uh, we're going to go ahead and clear the chambers at this time.
I need an officer to go outside. I mean, you need to go outside.
I need an officer. I have one constituent for violence. Can I please get someone?
Yes, you can go across and violence.
I'm asking you, you're on turf.
You, you want him to walk a little bit over to the...
Thank you for coming back, and we apologize for this interruption. Once again, we are serious about ensuring we are able to conduct the public's business and people that are here for public comment can talk to us regarding issues that matter to them without disruption and disturbances. At this time, I will call on speaker number six to come forward. Good evening, you may.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I do not agree to any pilot program. I do not agree to the city council recommendation stated on today's agenda because vandalism will increase. Nobody will respect our area. It will just be like a parking lot. Corrigan Avenue is not a parking lot. Therefore, no parking permits should be sold to non-Corrigan residents. I am old and feel fear for my safety. Leader will increase. On nine twenty-four, I noticed broken glass on the street near my home. Police calling will increase. The city of Downey failed to inform Corrigan residents where to email comments regarding the August eighth, 2023 hearing. The letter we received did not have that information. Therefore, Corrigan residents were not able to email or personally drop off those comments to the appropriate, to the appropriate entity. As stated today, and on September 12th, 2023, there's not enough police force. I am old for police force. Therefore, I do not feel safe having strangers on my streets. I am a taxpayer and homeowner. I have the right to park in front of my home without worrying it'll be parking when I get home from work. It is disrespectful to cause such a change for the Corrigan residents. It will not feel like a neighborhood. Corrigan residents are a community. We live in harmony with each other, recognize each other vehicles, and keep our street clean. Having strangers on my street with different vehicles all the time is not a community. It is not living in harmony. It will cause chaos and bring crime to Corrigan Avenue and more crime to the city. Gays in our neighborhoods on Corrigan have increased. Strangers are staying in their vehicles ten to twenty minutes at a time, watching the street up and down and also video tape in our houses.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Speaker number seven, you may come up. Thank you for coming.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening.
Oh, you...
I'm translating.
Yes, can you lower the mic so we can hear her? And, and just so you know, we do have services for interpretation. You just need to let us know ahead of time if you will be needing them. But we do provide those in advance.
Thank you. I am going to give you double time for translation. Thank you.
Please don't interrupt. We, we are conducting a business. This is your first warning.
Buenas tardes para todos.
Good evening, everybody.
Vengo, vivo en la calle Corrigan, y vengo a pedirles tres favores.
She lives on Corrigan. She's here to... She lives on Corrigan, she's here to ask for three favors.
Primero, quiero pedirles a ver si nos hacen el favor.
She's asking for the first favor being.
Que si nosotros que somos dueños de casa por cuarenta y dos años, nos pueden respetar.
As owners of her home for the last forty-two years, she wants to make sure that they are being respected.
En frente de nuestra casa que no se estacione, ninguno de los nuevos de los nuevos personas que van a venderles ustedes su permiso.
She wants to make sure that none of the new people who are gonna be receiving the permits to be parking in front of her home.
El segundo, el segundo es que si por favor les venden que sea un sticker y que no sea de guest parking.
Two second favors that she would like, that the permit that you do sell to the people off of Bellflower, that it's only a parking permit and not a guest parking.
Porque se lo van a prestar a otras demás personas, y solo lo que nos traen es pura basura.
She feels that she will be, they will be loaned to other people, strangers, and all they will do is just bring trash.
Y el último favor.
And the last favor?
Es que si por favor les piden a las personas que se vayan a comprar su permiso, por favor. Que si a las personas nuevas que van a venderles el permiso, los educan o les dicen, por favor, que no tiren basura en nuestra calle o donde se van a estacionar.
That the people who will be buying the new permits to request them and ask to make sure that when they do park, to not just leave trash out on the curb, because we're cleaning it up after that, and that's been an issue.
Es todo. Muchas gracias y disculpen.
No? Thank you.
No hay por qué pedir disculpas. Buenas noches.
Buena noche.
Gracias.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
I'm a resident of Corrigan Avenue, and I oppose to the amendment you want to do regarding the parking permit, because we feel insecure. In our last meeting, I said that that insecurity is for the whole street, the whole community in the area. And that's what's happened, because now there's people that they haven't got their permit, that they pass walking out to see all the neighbors and to like introduce like afraid to the neighbors, which is not right. I think you should be opposed to that amendment. That way, they don't have initiative to start bothering the rest of the neighbors, which is gonna continue with, not just only with us, but it's gonna continue with everybody, because everybody's gonna be unhappy with not able to park in front of your house, which when you buy a house, that's why you want to be still secure when you park in front. Otherwise, somebody else come in, parked there, and you don't know what they're doing. If they stay in the car, they can watch what you're doing, what time you're leaving. So that's, it's not, I do not agree with that decision that you want to make. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Speaker number nine may come up.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Frometta, council members. I'm Dorothy Pemberton. I'm here just to say thank you to our fire department and our police department for reacting so quickly on that Saturday event. We know as a graduate of the academy how the detective bureau works intently. They did a wonderful job in resolving this and bringing that perpetrator to light. And we just also wanna, I'd like to also say that I spoke with a former police chief who gave their insight on what we might do to make the area safe. It's unfortunate that a few irresponsible people then ruin it for the rest of the responsible people. He had told me, he said, "The first thing I would do would be put license plate readers, LPRs, throughout that entire area." He said, "This way, we have eyes on the cars and vehicles moving." The second thing that they would do is load up that area with cameras. Have surveillance cameras on every corner, every area where they do have some of the late-night bars. So if officers can't be there, we still have another ways to find the perpetrators. And lastly, of course, would be to have an increase of officers, or boots on the ground, or more patrolling in the area. So I'm sure you've already discussed it with your city manager and your police chief, and I just thought I'd bring that to light from the perspective of another police chief outside of our city. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Speaker number ten may come up.
Hi, I'm a resident of Corrigan Avenue, and I'm against the expansion of the permits for the obvious reasons. It's numerous cars that we don't know. So we don't know what's happening with them or what's going on. And when you get a place, you should check the parking that you have on your property, actually, instead of parking on another street. Hopefully, it won't pass, because I don't want the trash and everything, or moving out the trash cans so they can park, or being locked on my street, so I have a place to park on the weekends. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Speaker number eleven may come up. Good evening.
So I want to start off by saying that we have a candidate, Ms. Pemberton, who's running for District Three, but we have some of her friends in her circle threatening people with violence outside of the chamber. And when I asked Ms. Pemberton, "Do you condone the people that support you making illegal threats against others? Do you subcondone violence?" Your silence and your inability to condemn such behavior shows that not only are you not fit for this office, but you're not even lawful in the nature of your pursuit for this office. You should not be running for city council. In fact, what we all know is that you only recall Catherine Alvarez as a ploy for your campaign. If you really cared about law and order, you would have recalled Mario Trujillo for his participation in violating lawful orders, not only here in the city council by threatening and challenging people to fight, but also you would have made your campaign about addressing the problems with the policies that Gascon has made for the county. He had supported that. So when you claim that you are here to be a candidate of enforcement, you are not actually addressing the actual culprits here. You guys want to increase more police? Every two years, you do that. You increase the budget according to whatever the inflation rate is or whatever numbers you're following. So more police is just ridiculous. What you need to be addressing is poverty and low-income families not having the means to pay for the rent or having the food to survive here. You complain about Ojo's Locos. The problem with the shooting is that we have rest of bars, environments that promote drinking, drug abuse, and those are some of your friends, Mario Trujillo. The people who run those clubs are your friends. That's why you're not talking about that.
Please address your comments to me, Mr. Martinez.
I don't have to, and you need to shut up. So you need to follow the law? You need to stop my time if you're gonna be interrupting it.
I will.
Stop my time, Alicia.
This was your warning, and this was your warning.
Shut up. Anyways, I'm gonna finish my public comment, and I'm gonna say that we're gonna file a lawsuit for you kicking off people for their First Amendment violation.
Good evening, everybody, mayor.
Good evening.
I am also a resident of Corrigan Avenue. I've been living there for, I'll say about twelve, fifteen years, I'll track. But my husband literally was born in that home, and he is forty years old. That's where he grew up, and I'm assuming that's where he will die in the future. The reason why we wanted to get this parking permit started for our street is because we, it was just trash out there. People were coming in and dropping off their cars, getting picked up and being driven away. People were coming in their cars with bicycles, skateboards, and riding away. And when they pick up their cars, seventy-two hours later, they would just leave trash behind and switch out their vehicles. And there would be a lot of traffic, a lot of noise pollution. You know, I was afraid to take my son, who is now nine years old, through the front yard because of how much traffic there was. Now, when it's controlled, I don't fear for my son's safety when we just walk around that block, and he's riding his bicycle, his scooter, or just a simple walk. It just feels safer, because I don't have to be looking behind my shoulder for a car just speeding by, because they're looking for that spot, or that open parking spot in front of all our homes. That, we're all residents, we all know each other, neighbors, we all take care of each other. And also, I'm against that extra basically strangers coming to our street and leaving their cars for up to guaranteed seventy-two hours, and then for them to just walk away, and after walking away, walking away, they're looking at each single home to see what they look at or what they find out. And I can guarantee you, those guest passes, if they are given out, somebody's gonna sell them. They can sell those guest passes to the guy who lives two, three, four blocks.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Speaker number fourteen may come up.
Thirteen. My bad. Good evening. Thank you for waiting.
Last time I was nervous too. I'm nervous this time. Always am. I'm here from Corrigan, and I did email the four people on the panel, because I didn't know how to go about actually getting the information. And when I came to the last meeting, that it was canceled, because we didn't have the people. Thankfully, Mr. Baumgartner sent us a letter and a map, and I got mine today, barely in time, to see what's happening. And the thing that I don't understand is between the words on the letter and the map, the numbers aren't actually match. So the questions that I have to that are, the map shows eighteen houses in green for Corrigan and thirteen houses in blue for Buckles, but in his letter, number five, A and B, in the attachment, the numbers don't match that, if you count the colors. There are houses on Raybert and houses on Buckles that are marked for Corrigan. And then there's an additional house on Bellflower that is marked for Buckles, aside from the seven houses that you guys are splitting between Buckles and Corrigan. And when you add these houses up, and you times it by two and say, "Okay, let's pretend guest passes don't exist," the numbers don't all add up to the number of parking spaces. So my concern is, is that either somebody is looking at one thing, and somebody else is looking at something else, but all the information is not a hundred percent accurate that's being given out, whether you're looking at the color map of the one I received today, or you're looking at the letter. And I do understand that people on Bellflower don't have any place to park, because there's no parking on the street of Bellflower, but also recognize that, again, the people that want to park in front of their homes then may not be able to park there. And if, in fact, you sold all of those and the guest passes, there isn't going to be enough parking. And that's, I have a sixteen-year-old, I have an eighteen-year-old, they both have their license, and they live at home.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Speaker number fourteen may come up.
Good evening.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Bradley and staff. Madam Mayor, first of all, I want to acknowledge Mr. Funk and welcome him to the city. Secondly, I have some brief comments about a couple of topics that I can try to squeeze into my time. First one is the dress code. Some of us were wondering if the city council would ever adopt a dress code that would include a hoodie and shorts. You don't have to answer that. The next comment or next question I have has to do with criminal justice reform. In my opinion, the criminal justice reform tilts the scales to the criminal over above the victim. I think that social experiment, as has been happening in the last year or two, I think is slowly showing people that it's not working very well. I think we have to decide that government cannot protect us completely. There's an element that we have to decide for ourselves to be alert and to do the best we can, but we cannot count on government to do everything. The last comment I have has to do with love. We have to decide that there's too much negativity in this world. What I would suggest, Madam Mayor, is that all of us in this room decide, surprise someone, and tell them you love them. Now, I love everybody in this room, except for one or two. This ends my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Speaker number fifteen may come up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ramon Tossis Jr. First of all. Say again?
Good evening.
Oh, hello. Hi, Mayor Frometta. So first of all, I'd like to say God bless to those victims of the shooting at the Mambo Grill. That was a mass shooting. That's horrible that happened in Downey. Very eerie, very sad. So I'd like to give my blessing to them. Earlier this year, I suggested that we had police officers, four of them, on both sides of Downey Avenue in downtown Downey in order to be proactive. People veer away from police officers, because police officers are stern, protective. There are protectors. So Mayor Frometta, you're a very smart woman, powerful woman, great mother. You have the ability to make the change. Push it. You need to have a stronger presence. Okay, Officer Galvis passed away over here in front of the police station. The shooting, this mass shooting happened right here in downtown Downey. Enough talking, more action. Also, the RVs, they're adding up on Woodruff in front of Pete's. I think I saw around eleven or twelve the other day. This is not a campsite. It's not Mammoth or Big Bear. This is Downey. We need to do something. Get them out of here. It's against the law. Also, I spoke to a representative from the Southwest Carpenters of America. They're willing to employ a lot of people here in Downey. I said I would help them out. We could have a job fair just for them. They deal with construction, infrastructure development. So I'll give you their business cards here. We can also have them reach out to the high schools and have a relationship with the high schools in Downey. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Speaker number sixteen may come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Frometta, city council members, city staff, and everyone behind me. You know, when I look at this room, I see the involvement our city has and the amount of people that are here, sometimes listening to things that we do not necessarily want to hear. But yet, we're here, and I'm here today because the city matters to me. And I also know that it matters to many of us. I walked for every single one of you, except for Mr. Tim. And I did it because I believed in each of your platforms. And I wanted my city to be safe. As a mother of four, a wife and a business owner, I care. It sands me what happened. It's shocking. I've lived in this city for sixteen years now. I care for the city. I care for everybody behind me and in front of me. So I ask myself, is Ojos Locos the reason why this happened? Ojos Locos has been open barely a week, and we have a mass shooting in our city. Mambo Grill has been there maybe ten, twelve years, never has anything happened. So we have to question ourselves and say, are they the reason? Now, I understand, Madam Mayor, you stated your case. Well, I am here to state mine. As a resident of this city, I'm worried. And I want you and everyone else in here to understand that we're gonna fight for our city. We're gonna make a difference. And the fact that so many people came out today makes me happy because I know that that's what makes Downey different, because we care. As John said, we love our city, we love ourselves. Some of us, some of us not, right? But we're a thriving force. So currently, we have a hundred and nineteen police officers, which is down six. And with the amount of bars that we are currently approving.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mine is written. Uh, my name is Jennifer Alvarez. I'm a veteran Downey Unified Teacher and an anti-drug advocate here in Downey. Not long ago, I stood in this exact spot warning us to the violent element that would be lured to Downey and begging not to let that violence magnet into our beautiful city. The violence I warned would come is here, and now I'm back again to ask you to fix this horrible situation Downey is in. We all saw the long lines of men wrapped around Ojos Locos every night since opening on September fifteenth. Why wasn't the entire area cramped down with security? Now, our city is going to have to pay the consequences of what Ojos Locos lures, lures to Downey and increased costs for much-needed amped-up public safety measures to babysit this criminal bar and their patrons roaming our streets after going to Ojos Locos. Tax dollars for lawsuits due to weak and unprepared security in a packed downtown scene. And our family-friendly reputation of Downey is now on the verge of being known as a ghetto city. Just look at any online news reports about this mass shooting. They are filled with comments calling Downey ghetto, a high price to pay for what? A downtown revitalization that has created a drug and thug war zone. I read a post by Mayor Frometta saying that ninety to ninety-five percent of Downey's crime is conducted by non-residents. Knowing that Ojos Locos is attracting hundreds and hundreds of young male patrons from all over Southern California, why weren't we prepared with the public safety plan to match that extreme influx of visitors? Everyone knows the criminal that almost killed four innocent patrons did not drive over fifty miles to hang out at Mambo Grill. Several Yelp reviews online give us a peek as to where the people are coming from. HP, Whittier, La Puente, Pomona, Corona, Oceanside, and the mass shooter that our amazing DPD Downey Police Department arrested drove over fifty miles from Simi Valley, bringing a hardcore criminal mentality with him. This place has attracted a non-stop flow of unwanted types of trouble to our city. And according to one quote on Yelp, "The people going here are less than desirable. There was so much drug use in the restroom, it was ridiculous. Not exactly a family-friendly environment. Security didn't seem to care." So what to do now? How do we make the future of Downey safe for the future of our youth? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is, uh, Bobby Alvarez. And I too am, uh, part of the, um, drug, um, task force, if you will. But I'm just gonna continue here with what one, my wife was saying. Currently, many residents have voiced that they are in fear because of the Ojos Locos is attracting to Downey. The balance feels in favor of the drunks and drug criminals. Needed is a heavy, over-exaggerated police presence to show that the undesirable crowd that wants to make Downey an ultimate drug hub understand that we want, won't allow that to happen. All forces must be pulled out to meet the crim- criminal m, element. Uh, head on, this, head on and stop them in the tracks, in their tracks. Make it so they don't want to come to Downey in the first place. Heavy foot patrols, bar checks, or ordinance, compliances, DUI points, checkpoints, increased lighting, cameras everywhere from Ojos Locos to Downey Avenue and especially in the church parking lot and behind Embassy Suites, area that is dark, dangerous, and being used as a middle, uh, ground parking for the, for bar hopping. That is another crime scene waiting to happen. Some people say criminals will, will get off when no cash bail takes place next month, but that is not completely true. Defendants accused of murder, manslaughter rate, and most types of assault will still ha, face hefty fines, cash bail amounts. These are the types of violent crimes that we want to prevent from happening again. Our Downey Police Department needs funding to develop a model that allows them to put more patrols on foot while not taking away from all other Downing, downtown Downey areas. That is also their share of crime. Our residents shouldn't have to lose public safety because the Downey Police Department must babysit the Ojos Locos infestation. Protect us from being known as a drug and thug town. We want city council to implement a twelve AM.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Number eighteen? Were you number eighteen?
Twenty-one. He was twenty.
Oh, was he? Okay, twenty-one. Oh, nineteen. So he was twenty. Okay, so nineteen. I, I didn't think we. He's nineteen. Some, somehow they got skipped over there. Okay. Yes, we'll get to you in a minute. So number nineteen. Good evening and welcome.
A couple of months ago, you may recall, uh, we had some citizens ask the council to a, adopt a neutral flag policy. Uh, I haven't heard anything more on that, but, uh, one of the warnings they gave was if this is not adopted, we will start getting other requests. And I can give you just two examples. A city up in Northern California, I cannot recall the city. There was a request for a Nazi flag to be flown on the city flagpole. And then closer was Carlsbad. Someone asked to fly a Confederate flag. Now, most of us might find those offensive, but without a neutral flag policy, how can you tell them no? If you do, then you're gonna be facing a lawsuit. So again, I want to ask the city to adopt a ne, a neutral flag policy. And then the other thing I want to talk about is what everyone's been talking about tonight is the crime. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. But what I would like to know, and we do have the police chief here, I don't know if she's allowed to address the public, but why was this policy adopted? Was it because the county and the courts forced the police department to, or is it just something they decided to do? And as the previous gentleman said, there will be crimes that will still face bail, but many won't. And I can give you a few examples. Vandalism, property theft, smash and grabs, most of them will not be, uh, face bail. Auto theft even, disorderly conduct in downtown. None of these crimes will have any consequences. So we can ask for all the police we want, and I do want more police, but there's not much they can do. As you mentioned, Mayor, it's basically a catch and release. So what this Nobel policy is gonna do is increase crime, decrease the morale of the police officers, because it's almost gonna become pointless for them to go out and battle crime. So I, if somehow, some way we can be addressed as to why this policy was adopted, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, we will finish public comment and then I will, um, refer to our city manager to, um, have our police chief, uh, speak to that. Oh, twenty-two now. Okay, um, so that was number nineteen. Wait, uh, Mr. Baragán, eh, we're number twenty.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Frometta.
Good evening.
Uh, my family has lived in Downey about fifteen years. I have a daughter who attends, uh, Downey High School, and my son will beginning next year. I'm here to comment on public safety in Downey in light of the shooting over the weekend. I first want to say that I agree with all of the, the comments, um, made already, especially by, um, Jennifer Alvarez and her husband and Elizet Rivera. Um, I, uh, especially want to ask that the city council reconsider increasing the number of police officers um, and police patrolling, especially in the downtown area. Thank you, officers, for everything that you do every day. We must not sacrifice our safety in our city for the sake of tax revenue from these bars and our new adult cantina. I've heard even lots of people e, e, even saying they plan to move because of their concern over safety here. I mean, that's, that says a lot. I want to add that the, the city needs to enforce the new dress code for all restaurants and bars, including Ojos Locos and also Tempo, which, um, uh, I don't know if that's been brought up before, that has also started breaking the code. Probably in order to kind of match what Ojos Locos, um, brought um, to our city and, and to attract some of that too. If, uh, the city had no intention to enforce the dress code, um, the, um, council was actually deceiving the public by, by passing that code ju, just to try to appease us on that issue.
Thank you for your comment tonight. Speaker number twenty-one. Good evening. Can I proceed?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Jose Maya. I live in Bellflower Boulevard. Um, guess I'm the anonymous next-door neighbor to some of my previous speakers. Um, but let me, I gotta read this because I, I wrote it this morning. My name is Jose Maya. I'm, I'm, I'm a homeowner and I'm a taxpayer. I live in Bellflower. I have heard previous, some of my fellow neighbors about the concern, and I am, I'm, I agree with them on all that. I'm on the same page with them on everything they have said. Because I'm in the same boat with them. I want safety in our city. I have such, want safety on our street. I want it to be clean. I want it to be peaceful. But if they're gonna put me on, on a basket with, uh, people who do crime, people who, who dump the trash on the street, people who come and park their cars for weekends and weekends, I'm on, I'm on this, I'm on their, on their shoes, and I don't want that on my street. If I were to park on their street, there would be a guarantee that guys, excuse me right now, that they would not find any, any, uh, uh, complaint from any other neighbors because I respect my neighbors because I'm a homeowner. It's only three single-family homes who are gonna be parking there. And I guarantee you will not, um, be bothered whatsoever. Um, the scenario they have presented is not Downey. They have said that there's needles everywhere, there's, there's all this stuff. I seen it in Compton, to give all due respect to all these other cities, Compton, South Central. This is Downey. Whenever someone to he, hear from you, "Where do you live?" Downey. Whoa, that's a nice city. And we want to keep it that way. So all respect to all my, all of my fellow neighbors. Um, share some of your space with us and you will not be bothered. Thank you. Good evening.
Uh, good evening. Um, so it's always terrible, you know, when, um, gun violence, um, happens, uh, and very unfortunate and very, um, harrowing, really. Um, and I, I hear what people are saying about, you know, more police, like that argument could be made. But I would also encourage everyone to think about, well, eh, you know, treating the prob, this problem with police is sort of like, you know, you get to the emergency room because you had a heart attack, right? Like, what about, can we think of ways that we could maybe avoid a heart attack? So we don't have to go to the emergency room? So, you know, to stop crime, uh, yeah, you can eh, attempt to stop it as it's happening. But really, you know, you gotta think about how can we reduce people's, uh, probability of committing crime? So there you gotta talk about, you know, good-paying jobs. You gotta talk about healthcare. You gotta talk about, I like what the mayor said at the beginning in her remarks. She said, "We have to think about this in, as a global, um, global." She used the word global. But to me, what that means is, uh, that we should oppose what our congressman is doing, where he's voting to send billions upon billions of dollars to Ukraine to have this war. Um, that is really just like the cover-up for our president's money laundering, uh, through Ukraine. You can look all that up in all sorts of news outlets. It's totally true. Um, and so, no, we want that money here. The mayor's saying, "Well, we don't have money for this or that," uh, say the police department. Well, if we weren't, uh, attacking other countries like our congressman wants to do in Ukraine, maybe we'd have some of that money here. We gotta have that type of conversation so we can stop uh, all types of, uh, crimes, uh, way before they ever happen.
Thank you for that. Um, this brings us to the end, uh, the last item, uh, public comment. And I wish, uh, the individuals that had spoken regarding Ojos Locos were, were still here. That sometimes, uh, people have waited so long, they speak and they leave. Um, I wanted to address a couple of items, um, that were brought up, uh, regarding, um, the enforcement of, uh, dress codes, uh, the policy that was adopted, uh, for Ojos Locos. And, and no, this city council does not just adopt, um, ordinances to appease the residents. Um, that is not what we are in the business of doing. Um, we, we do that with a purpose. And, um, I've asked our city manager to provide an update for that. And then also, um, I know there was a question that, that I know everybody wants to know. Um, in clarification regarding, um, in, I would ask our, our police chief after that to elaborate, uh, why it is that our Downey PD, um, must adopt the new policy as of October first. But first, I'll turn it over to our city manager regarding, uh, enforcement of address codes.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I think you said some of that in your comments earlier. Uh, there is a city policy that mandates and dictates appropriate dress codes at, uh, restaurants and other facilities within our community. We are enforcing that. There are some nuances to it, but we are enforcing that code. Uh, that is definitely something that is in our purview and something that we are working on. Uh, there was another question, if, if Mayor, just real quick, I can go through real quick, about flag policy. The council does have a flag policy, and the council has the sole authority on, uh, and putting flags and all the United States flag and the, uh, uh, the state of California flag, Downey. And I think the POW flags are allowed to be flown here. Everything else is under government speak and is under the control of the city council. Um, and as far as the Nobel policy, the chief can talk about that, but that was a, a law that was passed by the county that we are not electing to be a part of, that we were, um, required to, uh, participate in. But Chief, you can have, say a few words about that, please.
Sure. Thank you for that question. I know it is very confusing. Uh, but by statute, the, the courts are the ones that determine bail. And, uh, they've recently been trying to do some reform to the cash bail system, and this new protocol goes into effect on October first. But that is set by the LA County Court, and we're, we're compelled to comply with that.
Thank you, Chief. Um, one more item that I, that I wanted to address. And again, um, please know that when we establish ordinances, when there are, um, there is a process for, for, uh, admonishment or citations. And, um, we did also pass, um, uh, an ordinance regarding the no overnight parking for RVs, uh, along Woodruff Boulevard. Now, that, um, the, the signs have gone up, and some of, uh, these RVs have been cited. There is a process as well. Um, it's not that just, you can just cite them once and then they're done. There is a process as well. Um, it's not that just, you can just cite them once and then they're done. Um, there's gotta be a, a process for that. And I want our residents to know and understand, um, that we are looking into those processes, uh, as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Um, at this time, uh, if there's no more speakers in the audience, uh, I will entertain a motion to close public comment. on our agenda. Now is the time for consent calendar items.
So moved?
Second.
Are there any council members that need to, uh, pull an item, abstain, uh, or remove Please vote. an item from our consent calendar? Looks like we have a, we have a beeping sound. I don't know where that is coming from.
Mayor, I need to abstain from, uh, number seven from prior meetings.
The motion is approved unanimously.
In my discussion, I voted no against the process.
What I would like to do is, I would like to pull number, um, seven, um, for further discussion. And if anybody else, um, has any comments?
So you, you pulled it, I, but I did have a question regarding number seven. If we clarify, there was no discrepancy as the, uh, resident stated. But you pulled it, so we're good.
Okay, um, so with, um, pulling number seven, um, can I get a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with item number seven being pulled per separate discussion by Mayor Fromeda.
Hey, thank you. Um, I know that we've had, uh, many of residents, uh, along, uh, Corrigan, uh, certainly from, uh, Bellflower Boulevard here, um, to discuss this, uh, pilot program. And, um, I want to have an opportunity to, to have this item for discussion because um, what we are trying to do is, is alleviate the additional parking that those streets, um, had from other areas. And, and I wanted to spend a little bit of time, um, discussing what it is and how these permits would be, uh, would be given. Um, I think a residence, uh, has, have spoken very strongly, uh, against all these additional guest passes, um, given. And, and I just want to be able to, um, discuss a little bit further. Uh, and also, um, Councilmember Sosa, you, you had an additional question, uh, regarding this item.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, one of the residents brought up there was a possible discrepancy, uh, with respect to the homes in the map. So I just want to make sure, uh, I mean, it's, if we're gonna vote on something like that, it's gotta be clear. It's gotta be accurate.
Uh, as far as staff is concerned, we don't know that there's a discrepancy there at all, but I'll let staff weigh in a little bit. If there was a specific question. Uh, right now, what we're proposing to do is, uh, bring a certain number of homes, uh, from Bellflower. Uh, three on the south side, and these are single-family homes only, uh, and four on the north side. The three on the south side would join the Corrigan, uh, uh, district and, uh, four on the north side would join the Buckles District. Um, we staffed did do a survey of available spaces on those streets. And based on the survey that was conducted, uh, there appears to be adequate space for parking on those streets. Um, as far as the question goes, I believe with, uh, uh, guest passes, I believe these homes would be treated currently as the ordinance and the resolutions are written as any other home on those, on the, on those districts. They'd be eligible for guest passes. Um, as far as, uh, if the council wanted to change that, uh, I'll have to look to staff to make sure, but I think we'd have to change the resolution. Uh, not the ordinance to, uh, to allow, to make sure that there's not a, uh, allowance for guest passes, if that's the, the will of the council. Uh, but currently they would be treated like any other home that, that would be in that district. Uh, with, uh, I think they get two passes permanent and eligible for one, uh, guest pass. Just like anybody else in the, in the, in those communities.
And again, I think what, what a residence would also want to know is that only the individuals that live, um, in, in these streets, these, these permits, uh, these parking permits are now going to be given to individuals that, uh, are, you know, that live, you know, two blocks away or, or any other, uh, member that will want to park in that particular street. I don't know if there was some confusion as to anybody can just get a parking, uh, permit and, and park right there? Because now there's a pref- preferential parking, uh, area.
And that's correct, Mayor. The, only the homes that are identified on, on Bellflower will be allowed to apply for a permit to park on those streets, whether it be Corrigan or, uh, Buckles, depending upon which, which houses we're talking about that are joining those districts. Nobody outside of the community will be allowed to apply for a permit. They would, they would be, and no multifamily properties. It's simply the single-family properties that are listed on Bellflower that would be allowed to apply for a permit. Now, on-street parking is still possible because the restriction for those areas is, um, only from two to six AM. Uh, so folks can park on those streets any time of the day. That's what the ordinance allows for, and that's what the parking district allows for. However, they have to move their cars, uh, come two AM and they have to put them somewhere else. So the only people with a permit at that point are allowed to park in those areas.
Because this is a problem I think we have all across our city. Um, and I think this, this is not, this is not, um, an exception to this particular, uh, neighborhood that, you know, we've had individuals particularly, uh, close to, uh, shopping centers. Um, I know that in, in the northeast, uh, where we have the, the, the original McDonald's, um, the neighborhoods right behind it uh, also have, um, the experience heavy congestion of people leaving their cars for, you know, the weekend, because then there's buses that take them to, whether it's Nevada or Reno, and they're, they park there for, you know, three days at a time. Um, it's, it's not illegal as long as they come back and they move it. Um, so I think the, the city is experiencing this, um, type of issue all over. Um, but I think that the concerns that were raised, uh, are, um, that this, you know, the number of parking passes perhaps, or the number of guest passes, um, if we need to then eliminate and just do two, uh, passes per resident, residents and, and not guest passes for overnight. If, if that is going to be something that, um, would, uh, be, if the residents would believe, be more beneficial, um.
But yeah, that's great. Each, each home is eligible for two permanent passes that belong to the, the residents that live there. And generally, we've given one, uh, a guest pass so that they can have their families or other folks park on, uh, park there too during the, the day and evenings.
Okay, because the alternative is, we don't have this pilot program and it continues to be as is.
Yes, correct. Sorry, yes. It looks like actually the parking permits, the temporary ones are written into the ordinance. So we've have to, so if the council wanted to change that, we'd have to amend the ordinance and then reintroduce that to, uh, the future public hearing.
Well, it's a pilot program. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
And that's correct. Currently, we're, we have, we're required of staff to come back in eighteen months, uh, to provide a report to council of any issues and concerns that have arisen, at which time the council could choose to either terminate the program or to continue it.
Now, um, how, uh, in, in terms of, uh, enforcement, um, I know that we had talked about, um, some signs going up and the residents being, uh, notified well in advance. Um, how, how farmed and, and how buttoned up, uh, is our, is our plan? Are those signs up and are we following up?
Uh, yeah, my understanding is all signs have been installed at this time. Uh, generally speaking, uh, we wait till a certain amount of residents have applied for permits. Uh, and then, then we put up the signs to say that, yes, there's a legitimate district there. Uh, we've made sure that, that, that's taken care of. All signs have been installed. Police have actually been out to these homes, uh, and make sure that the, uh, enforcement is happening. I think we've issued some tickets over there and, uh, as I understand it from the residents, if he's gone through this process, uh, enforcement seems to be adequate. Folks seem to be okay with, uh, what's going on there, but we will continue to be vigilant. Uh, making sure that we have staff there on a daily basis or a weekly basis to make sure that, uh, enforcement is taking place and that we're all ma- making sure these districts are intact and whole.
Any questions?
So I just want to be clear because I, I was approached and asked a couple of times. Will anyone from the surrounding apartments qualify to get these permits?
The answer is no.
Okay. And if I understand this correctly, because I heard the residents from Corrigan say that they saw progress. A- a- and let's be clear, this council is giving homeowners preferential parking. Even though the law is clear, we do not own the parking spot in front of our homes. We do not own those. We cannot let you take possession of that parking spot technically, but what we do is we give you preference. We call them preferential parking area. Will someone from Volte be able to park on Corrigan?
No.
No. Alright, so what we're trying to do is, what happened in the process of giving homeowners preference, we left out some families like the Mayats on Bellflower, and we identified seven homes. And we needed to find a way to make it fair for them. So this is why we came up with this pilot program and we're just asking you to be good neighbors, to not be afraid that these permits are being given out to complete strangers. We're trying to have seven homes absorbed into this district. And then what we also are going to do is add additional parking spots on Stewart and Gray to help that absorption. We do not believe that this is going to impact you negatively. And by you, I mean people on Corrigan and Volte or Raybert or Buckles. This is a specialized area. We are recognizing that you should be giving preferences, but we have to be fair to other homeowners who have rights just like you. Again, you do not have any rights to the parking spot in front of your home. But we're giving you preference because we recognize that you're a homeowner, but we couldn't do that for this individual and these families. And they share the same concerns over public safety. He has children that need to come home and find parking. And that's what we're trying to do is accommodate your neighbors. People who own homes just like you. Okay, so we're asking you to try this out. We will revisit it in eighteen months. But based on the information I have before me and my responsibility to represent everyone, I am of the position that I'm going to try this out. And by the way, my daughter lives not too far from this neighborhood. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. You absolutely did have a problem. And that's why we're giving you preference, because you shouldn't live under those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. If there's no further comments, I will entertain a motion in a second, um, for this item.
So moved. I move that we adopt the proposed ordinance to allow the Bellflower homes to be incorporated into this preferential parking permit, uh, process for the homeowners in this location. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Thank you. This takes us to the end of our meeting. Um, the council meeting will now be adjourned in memory. Please a moment of silence for Forside County, North Carolina Deputy Sheriff Two, Austin Smith, killed in a vehicle crash while on duty. Hartford, Connecticut Police Detective Bobby Garten, killed while his patrol vehicle was struck by a fleeing vehicle. In Texas, firefighter Joe Parish, who died after being involved in a crash while resp- responding to a fire. Louisa County, Virginia firefighter Mia Etheridge, who's, uh, who succumbed to her injuries after being involved in a crash while responding to a fire. Los Angeles County Sheriff Deputy Brian Clickenbumer, who was ambushed while conducting patrol duties and succumbed to his death, to his injuries. And former California Fire Marshal Ronnie Coleman. And Pat Slaney, longtime Downey resident. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. It is eight forty-five. This meeting is adjourned.